It's Kingston Planning Board, October 5th, 2021. We don't have any public hearings tonight, so this is a big section for us and the time to get some board business done. We have with us our, one of our alternates, actually both of our alternates here. Steve Padfield, and Steve, we're missing two regular members, so you'll be voting in.
I got the call.
Yep, you know, until and when, or if they show. Okay, we have Board Member Peter Confin, Vice Chair Merrill, Selecting Rep Richard Wilson, Glenn Coffman here, to my right, Ellen Faulkner, another alternate, and our Administrator Assistant. Ellen, you'll be, you'll be on the hook as well for at least a while until, and if one comes, then we'll definitely see.
I'll just pull up first.
You're gonna, you'll defer to Steve.
Yeah, so whoever comes in, I'll step away and then speak.
All right.
Until next week.
Okay. And Chris Bashaw and Peter Baiki are absent at the moment. We have Board Member Robin Gaye and Tom Planting Glen Greenwood. I'm guessing Dennis is not going to join us.
I believe not.
Usually, he would, he would be here by now if he wanted.
When I passed his house, he was walking in from his truck.
Okay.
Not out of his truck.
Yeah, okay. All right, so hopefully everyone has some materials in front of them, an agenda for tonight. Glenn has passed out something for us when we get to discuss ordinances. I have a few things that I've, that I didn't make copies of that I'll bring up when we get to that part of the meeting, but Lynn and Glenn have been working on those, so Glenn put that together for us. I thought that we would start by getting ourselves through minutes of correspondence to start, since we passed over those at the last time at the end of our meeting. So I'd like to do that first, and then we'll get into our discussion on ordinances. But, oh, I need to tell you that the first item on the agenda, our discussion with Rich St. Elair, won't happen. I had a call from Rich shortly before the meeting saying that he would not be here. So we will table whatever discussion we were gonna have on that till another time. How about we do the minutes first? Minutes of August 17th are the first ones on our list.
There's one set of minutes that you've had in motion, a mountain of directions. This is what I did from the tape, and I could barely hear anything.
Oh.
So I noticed the mountain, but I had to get them in quickly.
Probably over seven.
Because we were behind the week by the time I came back from vacation, so I noticed a ton of stuff after the fact. I wouldn't accept, no one should say except them as written, because I do not believe that would be a good idea. Like someone's last name is missing because I couldn't hear it.
Oh, yeah.
That kind of thing, so I know there's one place where a motion started because I typed it in, but then you guys added it to it, and I didn't remove it from one section. So I noticed those two things right off the bat, so if you haven't.
And that's on what date?
I think it's September 17th.
Of September?
No, August.
August.
August. Why don't, why don't you redo it?
Yeah, because the 28th is the sidewalk, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so if, if, the thing is, once I submitted to the town clerk and they were already late because I had been on vacation, I can't then resubmit them. I have to wait till you guys, but if you guys want me to just correct them and bring the corrections to you at the next meeting, we can do that.
Why don't we do that?
Yeah.
So we're gonna table August 17?
Yeah.
And how about the sidewalk minutes from August 28?
The sidewalk was good, that was good.
That looked fine to me.
Yeah.
I make a motion where you set the minutes for the sidewalk.
A second motion by Lynn, second by Peter.
28th sidewalk, yeah.
Oh, yeah, right, for the, for the August 28th sidewalk. Any discussion of those, corrections, adjustments? All right, just as a reminder, a reminder, the table is voting, that gives us seven voting members. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? So that's unanimous, thank you, passes.
Almost everyone at the table is voting.
All board members at the table are voting.
It counts.
Just felt a little lift up.
Well, you can, you can vote if you just hold your hand. You can vote. Okay, let's see, see if we can get through this correspondence folder, which has grown since the last time, I think. Yep.
We got the, well, I think I can do that.
All right, the first one is an invoice for the October training with the New Hampshire Municipal Association. I believe this is.
That's for me.
That's, that's for you, and this is for.
Right to normal training?
Right.
And with everything that's been going on.
Is it virtual?
Yes.
That's good.
But it, what, during the, it's October 14th.
October 14th, right to normal training.
Okay, the Saturday, right?
I'm sorry, what?
October 14th is Saturday, it's a Saturday, right?
No, I think it's a Thursday.
Oh, okay, that's good, oh, that's right.
October 14th is a Thursday. All right, next we have a request for release of funds for Tax Map R 22-32 for Robert Kalil of 19 Page Road. And a note on here from Ellen says it's pending review of final invoices. So the balance is yet to be determined. Do you want me to sign it in anticipation of?
Yes, because I think I have some invoices of Glenn's that has to go in.
Okay, so I've signed it, but it won't get released until anything that's charged against it. We have five invoices from Town Engineer to sign, to review, and probably sign. And the first one is for 19 Colby Road. That's the accessory dwelling unit that we just approved, and it's for $256.25. Anyone have an issue with that? I'm not gonna ask for a vote, I'm just gonna ask if anyone has any issues or things to discuss.
Would the Ellen may have an issue? Just keep doing it.
Just do it. Next one is for his time at planning board meetings for, one, two, three, four, five meetings, total of $297.50. Next one is for Tripodi at 62 Mill Road. Plan review, drafting memo, so forth and so on, total of $205.50. Fourth one is for Smallpox Realty. And again, it's for attending planning board meetings, reviewing plans, drafting memos, actually a couple of planning board meetings. And total of $663. And all of these come out of the escrow for the various applications. And it goes without saying that I'm signing with the understanding that there's enough money in there to pay it. And the last one is for Campers In for several activities, planning, getting plans, with a memo, planning board meeting, so forth and so on, All right, we have two letters from Brezner Hand Moving and Storage. Both of them are from Joseph Brezner Hand Jr., with copies to Glenn Greenwood. And I will read these into the record for the board's benefit. Let's see, first one is dated, they're actually both dated August 20. The first one is regarding lighting. And before I read this, let me preface it by saying that I brought this to Glenn's attention because a resident asked me to look into it, and so I did. And it's regarding the wall packs on the buildings, which are supposed to be fully shielded, and they are not. So Glenn reached out to Mr. Brezner Hand, and this is the reply. Address to this board, it is my understanding from Glenn Greenwood that some members of the planning board believe that my lights do not meet code. I have spent over $100,000 on electrical planning and implementation on the plans with Kingston Electric, your own electrical inspector. Have had, I have had many conversations with Tom of Kingston Electric on this issue and was told that all of my lights meet code by a long shot. They are night sky compliant, and the footage they throw off on the hot top is enough for safe passage of our storage customers. They provide a safe and secure environment for our customers as well as the police department to look into our facility for random inspections at any time. The exterior lights are on from dusk until midnight. I hope this answers your questions regarding our lighting. Should you have any further questions or concerns, I would recommend that you reach out to your electrical inspector.
And I reached out to our electrical inspector, and he verified that there are dark sky lights. And I reached out to Brezner Hand and told him they needed to adjust their clock because I came by at 1:00 in the morning and the lights were still on.
Okay, well, that's one issue, but the other issue is that they might be, the fixtures might be night sky compliant, but you can, you can set them, you can adjust them to different.
Times who think they are.
Well, I mean, after I was, after I was talked to by the resident, I drove by at night, I looked at them, and I mean, they come right out at, you're not supposed to be able to see the, the light, the element coming. It's supposed to be down shielded, and there's supposed to be nothing above the horizontal plane, and that isn't the case, I'm sorry.
And it looks like there's some lights that are inside.
The inside lights put out more light than the outside lights.
Well, that, that is another.
But they still be compliant, so if they're casting light outside, you can't cast light off the property. Has to be shielded to, you can't see the light source from off the edge of the property.
I don't know whether the inside lighting goes off the property, but the, the issue that I brought to Glenn's attention was specifically what was brought to my attention, which was the wall packs. And, you know, if, if the manufacturer says they're compliant, dark sky compliant, that might be the case if they're adjusted in a certain way, but the way they're, the way they're on there now, they're not. But I don't know what, I don't know what this town wants to do.
I'll talk to Tom again.
I think normally what you do is you go to the town electrical inspector and say, I don't think these are compliant, what's going on in this case, it's.
In this case, it's the same person who he said he installed, and they are compliant. They are dark sky compliant.
In the past, if we've had, like with Dennis or anyone else, if one of our inspectors is the one who did the work, we hire somebody else to come and review it.
Well, we do have a deputy electrical inspector or something. Maybe that person should be taking a look.
Because again, the lights could be fine, someone could have done something, and Mr. Brezner Hand doesn't, didn't do it, but someone, the person who works there might have. And they're not as dark sky compliant as they are to it.
I had asked, in my original conversation with Mr. Brezner Hand, whether or not somebody had done a universal light fixture change just because it was scheduled to happen and did something to screw it up, because I was asked over a year ago, or maybe it's even two years now, right after they first opened, to go look at the site. And at that time, I noticed that the lights inside were, were causing much bigger a problem. And I thought the external wall packs were actually downcast. But after Glenn answered that he thought they were, I took the light out and they definitely, it'd be more likely that I remember them to be. But Mr. Brezner Hand said, no such universal light exchange can happen if they like to change them at all.
So sometimes, sometimes the wall packs have adjustable shades, and you can, you can actually.
Yeah, a lot of times they do.
Yeah.
A lot of times they do. A lot of times they have a plate that you want to install, and you don't install. It's as, it's as simple as that.
Well, the people across the street would be happy if the lights went off at the right times, they don't, so I'm working on that too.
So there's that issue.
I'm just not out there like very open, so.
Yeah, not at all.
Who is? So, so what's the follow-up gonna be on the wall packs?
I'll talk to Tom, and I'll talk to the deputy electrical inspector.
Okay.
Home inspector.
Thank you, Richard.
Home inspector.
Okay, the second letter, are we done with that topic for, for now? The second letter from Mr. Brezner Hand dated August 20, addressed to this board. After speaking with Glenn Greenwood, he recommended that I write to you to respectfully request a one-year extension for the planting of trees due to the fact that there is not a nursery around that will warranty trees at this time. The inability to warranty trees at this point is due to the infestation of gypsy moth and other insects which are destroying trees throughout New England. You just need to ride up and down the road to see that our landscape is changing drastically. Our local nursery just north of us is a perfect example. If you take a look, the trees have been overtaken by insects and are destroyed. I respectfully request a one-year extension, thank you for your consideration, sincerely, Joseph R. Brezner Hand. Glenn, do you wanna follow this? For the board's benefit.
I called two landscaping places to see if they would want to trees. And to my consternation, one said no, and one said yes. So there, I also did an internet search. I just had to know when he was talking about the gypsy moth infestation, because I've lived in one of those, and I do not see it. But apparently it is going on north in a pretty constrained, well, that's, that's subjective. The, the internet search, I think it said there's about 100,000 acre area in New Hampshire that does have a substantial gypsy moth population.
And, and, you know, to be fair, they, there are pockets that will happen even in years that it's not widespread. In my Christmas trees last year, for example, they were crawling with gypsies, and they were, I mean, munching on the trees like you wouldn't believe. They were just crawling with them.
Did they destroy them?
They destroyed a few of them, but I caught it early enough, but I had to spray a lot to, to knock them down.
I found two walking on my deck, shit.
Yeah.
But I hadn't seen them since the big infestation.
See, I haven't seen, since they were literally dropping on anybody who was outside.
I know.
That, that might be what it was for.
But it looked like walls were moving.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was disgusting.
They're around almost every year, and every so many years they're, they flourish because the cycle just happens to hit right.
So aren't we out of planting season anyway?
Well, when we got, when, when, back in August, we were, we were still, we were still in it.
Now we're very retaliative, would you say?
Now I would say that it would be probably not, not a good idea to force planting at this time. If, if we had taken care of this in August and had it been done in September, that would have been excellent time to do it, but not now.
So why not get to 2/30, or something, give them the April 8th meeting or something?
Yeah, because if he doesn't do it early enough in the spring, then we're gonna miss.
It's right.
Season again, yeah.
That's right.
I think that's the way we approach it.
It doesn't, we do it.
Right, because it's, it's, it's partly our fault in reacting late to this, so, but it certainly comes with the year.
So why don't we give it May month?
Well, I'm asking, I'm asking Ellen if she can find out what our, what our.
Changed Brezner's conditions that, which I swear I had right on top, so that seemed to be on top of it.
Because they hear, they hear mic from us to whatever, spring now.
Well, wasn't it just that?
Why don't we just extend it to June 30?
No, I thought his, I thought his conditional approval was to October.
It was till October, but then, that also then predicated the next year's review and the next year's review. The condition of approval was planted by October, but then you were gonna have the people come out and review it and honestly, it's just being on top of it.
Why don't we just extend his deadline to June 30? Doesn't matter what his date was that expired, which is a Saturday.
I got it right here. So it was, plantings needed to be done by October 31st, 2021, with the yearly fall look review being completed by October 2022, and the final review being completed by October 2023. So you have three dates you have to change.
Right.
On the.
Do, do we have, do, do, if, we only have to change the first date.
Well, to change the first date, you wanted to have a year from when it was planted to see if it was still good. So if you're gonna change that deadline, then are you gonna keep these deadlines the same?
Well, it might not be bad to keep the second deadline a little earlier in the process because it would be right after the summer, and we'd see if they made it through the, through the summertime.
Because they were gonna incorporate, remember, some of those plantings were gonna have to have the bags on them, the water, the devices.
The subwatering things, yeah, the gators.
Yeah, to get, to get them through the dry period.
And let me just, the motion is to approve the amended site plan contingent upon, these were the recommendations in the Seacamp Environmental Consulting letter, that they be done year, you know, with, you know, the yearly thing. If you guys don't wanna do it, that's fine, but that's why I brought the motion, so you'd know that changing one date might mean you have to change two others.
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't think Ellen's saying that we, that we're not interested in those other dates. I think he's thinking that if we, if we continue this to the planting season in 2022, then if we hold the 2022 date that he has in October, we'll see what kind of, how, how they move through that pivotal period from May to October.
So you're gonna, are you gonna add, are you gonna add a date then, so there'll be four reviews?
I don't think that's what you're suggesting.
That's not what I was suggesting, but we could.
You're suggesting rent and extension of that October 31st date for first planting to something like June 30th or something.
Yeah, Richard said. Whenever he wants to, I'm saying give it to June some, or something. That way, if he doesn't do it by then, then we can do it in the fall.
To June?
Take it out of his money and do it in the fall.
Then check in on in October 2022. And if things are just going swimmingly, check again in October 2023.
Which will give two summer seasons.
Two summers.
So it only shortens the first review period. Right after the summer, instead of it being a full year, but then the other two dates remain at a full year's time.
If they're gonna die, they die in three, four months. Right.
I mean, look at what happened up at vines. They all died, and nothing replaced, but they've, oh, but they have two agree that are still moving, I think.
So.
Bike mini fields.
So you were starting that motion?
Yeah, I was gonna say, what, the tree gap, what's the date?
Trees of, buildings in the building. Of trees.
First, because he needs to do it April, right, April or May?
Most of the trees die.
April, yeah, April, May would be the right time to do them.
So if we say June 30th, I think it's been plenty of.
Yeah, more than enough time.
For June 30th. That emotion.
That's a motion.
I'm running it down.
This cat shows it way great.
So next question, is that all I wanna say, or do you wanna put in the whole thing? To then check on the planting from October 2022 and the final review completed by October 2023. Don't make it in one motion, you know, to keep blocking that for.
That way someone doesn't have to keep going back to this.
Exactly.
And should we put something in there that if he doesn't do it, we're gonna do it? Or do we just deal with that at the time?
Take that out, I think you do that down.
Okay, okay. Do you want me to add in for the Seacamp Environmental Consulting letter dated 3/11/2020? Again, I want your people to.
Yes.
Because if he, if he doesn't do it, if he reads in there that if he doesn't do it, you will, he may just.
I'd say fine, go ahead.
When I go in. I don't think the town really wants to get into any of this.
The town doesn't want to do this.
Well, I don't know why there's somebody to do it, take it out of the money.
Yeah.
Well, let's, let's, let's give the applicant a benefit of the doubt that it, that it will get done, and if it doesn't, we'll deal with it then.
Do you wanna just copy the rest of the, it says the reviews, you got them compliant, so just add them in?
Yes. Basically, readjust that motion and include the reference to the Seacamp.
I will now.
Time to plant the trees and protect the lights and.
Oh, and then you also said an asphalt plan will be presented to the board on or before October 31st, 2021. Do you wanna make that on before June 30th, 2022? Okay, and Richard made that motion.
Richard made the motion, and I, Robin looked like she was ready to.
Lindy, do you?
But I think Lindy.
I'm sorry, Rob, I wasn't looking.
Sorry, I just didn't choose Lindy.
So Robin, Robin says, was that a motion? And all of a sudden, Lindy then said, second.
Now.
So you primed her, basically, you got her ready.
Before I even processed what I did.
I have a little note. It says 6/17/21. Brezner Hand owes $82 to record and to copies on $25 eligibility plan. So can we make that part of the condition? For me to confirm that he still owes the town money to be able to do this?
Well, if we know he owes the town money, why, why haven't we long since taken it out of his escrow?
Because I can't take this out of his escrow, it's the recording fees, and we're not allowed to do that, that's not what it's for. He doesn't give us a second chance, so.
And we didn't plot that upfront because?
We don't, we don't do the recording fees until the board's approved it.
Oh, that happens, okay.
So, so it's pending.
So Richard, we want that included?
Yeah, that's right.
Pending, in the, of recording fees.
It's the longest motion you've made in a long time.
It's the last one I've made in a long time.
And I'll, I'll double check that if, if for some reason it's all been done, is it okay if I just remove that for the motion? Okay, okay.
Okay, if you go plant the trees, too.
Nope. Okay. So Ellen, are we set then, take the vote?
Yep.
So we have a motion and a second for that very long motion. I think we all get the gist of it, does anybody want it reread for some reason? I'm assuming not, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Close? Abstentions? That's unanimous? We have an invoice from Treslo, Treslo Resources, I've already signed it.
Then it does just let you know, so we can find it.
The Rocking and Planning Commission puts out a monthly newsletter that, that gets emailed to the board, and it also gets emailed to Peter and I as commissioners from Kingston to the commission. There's a copy, Ellen printed a copy in case anybody's interested in seeing it.
Maybe you could just forward it to us every month when it comes there?
Sure, sure, you can do that.
Yeah.
Do you have to move that, Ellen?
Yeah.
The latest issue of the Municipal Association's hard copy magazine called Town and City has our wonderful town hall featured on the front cover.
Why did they do that?
Well, they tried to put a different town hall every month, so our number was up.
And I think they did send that to the board.
Yeah, you sent that out? Yes. Actually, they've, even though we get hard copies, they, they now distribute this electronically as well, so you can, you can, you can get it that way.
I mean, so frankly, we're all trying to send it to the board members, and any board member who doesn't want it just has to tell them.
Yep.
Yep.
Sometimes it's nice just to. Sometimes it's nice just to run through the table of contents and see if there's something that, that would be of interest.
Yep. Okay, the next item is something, it's concrete pad design and construction documents.
But that's just to show we got it, that was for Giants trucking.
And it's been installed.
Yeah.
And if anybody needs to, or wants to see the back.
So it has the very large structure behind the building that was approved about five years ago.
Did we have a limitation given? Doesn't have.
Uh, another piece of correspondence from the planning commission, and this is for the dues request for this year, which I believe, that's a selectman.
Yeah, close to the.
Yes. This is in here just as an FYI to us. Couple of things were out here duplicated, Eleanor. RDC is on here twice, Town and City's on here.
Well, this is, there's one that talked about the census and the impact, and there was another one that, which was a different one.
Okay.
And then um, that probably on, it was in there from last month.
Okay. The dues request we just did, uh, next one is County, Rockingham County Conservation District test bit report for Clark in Ball Road subdivision. I guess this, this goes into that file?
No, I haven't yet.
We don't have a file yet.
Oh, it's a pending, it's a.
It's, it's a, maybe, I guess.
It's a team.
We'll save it.
We have no information on it.
Okay, all right, so maybe we'll see a subdivision request at some point, but we have tested data now. And uh.
Yeah, it looks like they're doing a subdivision one lot off for a relative and the rest for, I think, um, conservation.
And uh, this is just my.
Same, sure.
Okay. And this is the packet that has gone, gone from our office out to town departments because we're starting the CIP process again. Um, so we just, we just finished the CIP.
Just finished the CIP process.
And maybe this year we'll get it done in a more timely fashion.
Is that supposed to be done with your budget?
Yeah.
It should be done quickly because of the extra money.
So there was a nice, a nice letter that went out from Glenn along with the spreadsheet from our current, uh, current CIP, and then the um worksheet submitted to us. So this.
Did I give them to October town hall?
This one is not one of the addresses.
She was talking the second page of the letter.
Oh, this one is for us, yes, this is our packet. Uh, you know. You're asking, you said, uh, please return worksheets by Monday, October eleventh, so this coming Monday. And I've, I attended the select board meeting last night, and as this, as the meeting ended, the chairman just said to me that he's, the select board's working on a CIP request. Just wanted us to know that they're working on it, and they wanted to make sure that, um, that they captured any projects that were related to this special money, this one-time shot of money that's coming in. They want their, some of those projects, I guess, would be reflected in the, in the CIP.
Sure.
Eleanor?
Speaking of CIP, I think it is, it behooves me to say something. Glenn and I talked about it on multiple occasions, that somebody has to address the issue of the scale of the planning board office.
The what?
The planning board office itself. We're out of room, there's no room for anything. Glenn and I have looked at two possibilities, and this isn't for that money, this is just, I feel since I work in the office, I should bring it to people's attention who may do something about it. If you don't, it's okay. We've talked about the possibility of putting something like that on this side of the building and switch human services and planning, as that is a way to expand an office so that the food pantry could become where the file cabinets are, and this would then give additional room. I don't know, to open a plan would be nice.
I was just saying, yeah.
Um, with the other opportu, the other option, obviously, cause everybody's talked about the possibility of doing something with the backstage as an office, and to reconfigure that, which I, I don't know what people would do.
Which is my choice, by the way.
Yes. Um, but this is the board, and Glenn and I talked about it, it doesn't do anything unless we bring an attention to, the attention to the people who do stuff. There's no room left in this office. Even, even if everything goes microfiche and the whole thing, there's still not any place to actually open a plan. So I just felt that do something with this information, don't do something with this information, but I felt important that guys had the information, and the selectmen had the information, and then people do with it as they will. But we think that that's the only way to expand that, is if welfare and human services switch, whereas this would be a lovely place to have tables and you could meet and review plans and things of that nature.
What?
Okay, that reference would be okay, but I think we'd basically be putting a band-aid upon it for however, fifteen thousand more years, I don't know. That keyword, is it out of the question? Are we really tearing down the fire station?
Yeah.
It's done.
Taking down, taking down the what?
Fire station.
Oh, the old one?
Yeah.
It's roughly one million dollars to make a complaint.
Yeah, it's less expensive to tear it down than it is to regrab your furniture. You build something useful else.
That's why they didn't try to, you know, redo it for the fire station, it was so prohibitive.
But we understand that it wouldn't work for a fire station, but everybody's out of room, well, even if, you know.
No, they, cause they did an analysis of it for the purposes.
For other things.
So we couldn't move all these inspectors and the planning over there. That's the thing.
We got a lot of issues coming up because one of our top priorities is to digitize all the records, which frees up a lot of room downstairs, but makes you have to put the records someplace after that. You know, so there's, we know there's a lot of issues.
Because it would, it would also, I mean, that, that's very, that was my favorite option because it would be better if the inspectors and the planning office were really with each other. And we just park it all, and it, it does make things go much smoother. And at some point, I think, you're going to have a full-time planner, and if you do have a full-time planner, it would be better if the, all these factors and the planners were together all the time.
But it's already an issue downstairs when there's more than two inspectors there. You know, it's a noise issue, it's a room issue, it's.
So I spend a lot of time meeting with planners in a lot of different places, and some of the best ones, most efficient ones we find is when the planners and the inspectors are together, and you kind of walk in, and there's a huge counter in front of you, huge, you know, very deep, so you can put plans on very long, and then if you've got something where this inspector needs to talk to that planner, or whatever, if everybody needs to look at a plan, they can all kind of look at it together and talk about it together, and it's something where the inspector, you know that you can walk in that room at between eight and ten in the morning, all the inspectors and the planners are there, so if you need a question to something, that's your time, and then they go off and do their inspections or whatever after. But a lot of towns have that kind of a system, and then beyond that, they've got one or two secretaries, administrative assistants that work for all the planners and all the inspectors kind of together. Maybe one just for the inspectors, one for the planner, but they're sort of cross-trained, so if somebody comes in and needs something, they can get it. And it just seems to be very efficient.
I mean, literally, I, I, I can only meet with people out there.
Yep.
Uh, which means I'm running back for all the time I have, I have to meet with people. It's just really silly.
So one of the things I'm going to ask for the selectmen is its possibility is to get a portable phone, so that anyway, we do stuff, we get a, you know, the phone's ringing, people get annoyed cause you can't answer the phone, cause you're ringing, here, looking at a planner, and.
And beyond that, are the phone systems that doesn't work? Eleanor and I cannot, you, we can't transfer phone calls between the two phones that are eighteen inches apart.
Because it counts as one line, even though.
So if, if she answers the phone on one line, I can't just pick up my phone and take that call, I have to steal her.
The phone system is one of the top priorities with my.
So when you do it though, can we get portable phones for us?
We're gonna, we're gonna have a phone setup where you can unplug your phone and plug it in many different places.
That would be lovely.
And give it your phone. I'll then take it for the fire station and plug it in, and it will still work.
How would it be in our office for ten, ten, fifteen years?
Cause that is, that is crazy, it is crazy, that, the, the phone, the two phones we have, it are right there in different houses.
It's, it's kinda odd. Well, since it talks about different things, I figure I'll throw this out here too. At some point, the town's gonna have to suck it up and get a full-time person for that office. It will not be me. So I'm not trying to feather my own nest, but you should have a administrative assistant who's the land use person. The chairman of the CBA shouldn't be doing their own notices in the, the, people shouldn't be calling that person at home to get information. You should have somebody who can do that stuff.
CBA, the Star District.
That's what I'm saying, it should be a land use.
All the land use boards, you see that all the time in other communities.
Yeah, so.
Of course you do.
And it seems like Kingston is such, for a town that's been so far ahead in so many areas, it seems like it's so far behind when it comes to infrastructure and the way we're doing it. But maybe it means we look at a different location for those kinds of.
I mean, I'm calling Ellie to ask her to do things, it, that is crazy, it's crazy, there should be an assistant for her that I've gotten to, I should be calling her after she sat two hours' leave on selectman issue to get, to immediately get a life with the CBA, it's silly, it's silly. It worked. Maybe one, one day, it, it only worked because she was willing to let, take her life away, but it's crazy, it's crazy.
Well, there are places that you can actually leave the town at lease space. There's lease space available in town.
It's also a parcel for sale, three big balls in the room.
Uh, the.
I think we ought to move on because we know.
We are just.
We could talk about this all night.
Except we've never had. So I wanted to put some of these things out, cause we were talking CIP, we're not gonna solve it tonight, but I felt it was my responsibility to bring some of these things up to the board. How you all deal with it is up to you, but I, I wanted.
Take a second over on this, where?
Didn't go out that way. It's been that way.
Second floor right here.
My mother was gonna expand the town hall, if you remember.
I do remember.
It's gonna go that way.
Gonna go that way.
With the police station underneath and all kinds of things.
I remember a pod that was gonna go that way, and the welfare office was actually gonna be a hall to get to it. So anyway, that's up to other people.
Well, I mean, it's, it's a good topic, it's a topic that we need to talk more about, it, but given the CIP that we're dealing with here tonight, is there anything that are, we're probably not at the point where we could put anything in here?
I, I don't think you have anything specific, I don't know if you have thoughts.
But maybe there should be something in there for a study.
Well, dealing with where it has to be sent, you probably have a nice couple of weeks to gather. Cause I know the guy has to go to.
But deal with a study where they could look at available space in town to rent?
Yeah, except that, except that study stuff doesn't really qualify for CIP.
Oh.
Cause it, it's not a capital purchase.
Okay.
No, but couldn't it be, I know, I know that there were other things we could, something to think about for the future as a placeholder?
Historical, um, historical societies, um, inventory of properties, that's, that's a one-shot study.
And that was in the CIP? Really?
Yeah, I mean, we have to, suddenly have to more than ten thousand dollars.
Well, a good, a good study for something like this is gonna easily go.
It's not, it's not, it's not a, it's not a, um, it's not an administrative, it's expensive, doesn't.
All right, I will, I will, I will work on something for that.
A bomb on the fire station.
Well, they, when they first did the studies, they had talked about, you know, ke, keeping that as a use for town offices, and the, and actually, when they talked about building the new fire station, they had talked about space there for the land use boards and the inspectors. But when it came to the fire station itself, it was going to be more costly than anything, it's just too expensive. If they thought that reusing the existing building would be more palatable to support buying and building a new station, so they had inputted that, and they didn't want.
What about the Swazy building? There's not any space in there, there's a.
Where'd you build it?
Where the gym is.
It's Swazy?
There isn't any space in there.
We won't own it.
We don't know.
Well, we won't own it.
Yeah, that's being sold for development, um.
I thought we were keeping that, no?
No.
The, the gym.
We're leasing it for a dollar.
The, the gym is being, yeah, leasing it back.
So if we put offices in there for a dollar, it's pretty good deal?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think there's a space there.
There's not a space.
Actually, when we knew there was offices, the space was great, it was just terrible, cause it was, uh, like the space was fabulous. We had a planning board office, we had tables, you could see maps, remember this, we had welfare. Um, it was huge, and you had.
Oh, when the town halls.
When the five hundred two there or so?
Yeah.
We didn't know what to do with the space.
Yeah, I know, it was great. It's a Swazy gym.
Well, it wasn't the gym, it was the, it was the, the science building.
Yeah, one day.
Between the gym and the seminar. Okay. Uh, the last thing in our correspondence folder is a letter dated.
Excuse me a minute?
Actually, the letter isn't dated, but it was received on October five, uh, twenty one by Eleanor, and it's from John Sorbello, and it says, it's regarding number thirty-three, Route one twenty-five. Says in reference to zone R two lot two.
Okay.
That isn't even a, is it?
No, then he reads the text, but he's like, I can't.
R two lot two, okay. In Kingston, we would like to have use of land for storage trailers. I'm reading this just as it is, clearly there are some, some errors in it. Preparation used of land will be required. No build or employees on site needed. Proper preparation will require land clearing of approximate one acre of land. Our goal is to be able to fit ten trailers in accordance with the board requirements and instruction. Thank you, John Sorbello. So what can you, Glenn or Eleanor, tell us about this?
They came in yesterday with this request.
Can you, can you put it into better words about what it is they're asking to do?
They're, they're asking to be able to put ten storage trailers on the site.
What is the site now?
The site is the one that was, at one point, gotta be a small retail plaza, it's, it's just, um.
It's just north on the right of, um, Whitney Square.
Yeah, so the next one, the way that goes behind it, Colonial Drive.
You have plenty of, so you've got the stove shop, and it's the next parcel?
No, you have the stove shop, the road, the little yellow house, and then that area.
Oh, about that time right at the top?
Yes.
And what else goes to the bottom?
And at one point, they wanted to do, there were plans for a small, um, mini plaza.
Yep.
And then Mr. Masado wanted to have his, um, custom specialty cars that he was going to store there in Warburg.
But how?
And that one, it's over there.
How does that work with the lining of the road?
Well, that's a question.
drive's been severed. That's what's a dead end, turns out from, um, Helpout in Colonial, it's a dead end.
I don't believe in zone for this use, before we get too far into it.
Yeah, it's, it's commercial three.
It's C three.
C three.
Yep.
Uh, and so I, I don't see it as permitting uses, I don't see it prohibiting uses, which means they have to go to the CBA for a certain set of.
Variants?
Nope.
Special.
Special, okay. If, if, in C three, if, if. If, if, in C three, if it's not permitted or prohibited, you can go to them for exceptions.
But the problem is, there's no way for us to contact him, to tell him any of that.
Right.
So we're gonna have to wait for him to get back to us. This is no information.
Alright. So you guys will be working on this, I guess?
Yep.
Uh, once he gets back to us, yeah, there's no, there's no contact information on this letter. Um, no address, no phone number. But you have, he physically was here.
Yes.
Yes, he was physically here on our. Okay. Alright, before we start discussing ordinances, I just wanted to bring up one thing that's not ordinance related, but it's master plan related. And I know that that's something else that we're gonna need to be thinking about and how we're gonna either update it or do a new one or do something. Because, I mean, we've updated a couple of chapters in recent years, but it's been a while since we've taken a good holistic look at it. The planning commission has some money, uh, and a contract planner, uh, that used to work for the Nashville Planning Commission. She's now on her own and, uh, the planning commission here contracts with her to do certain things. And one of the things that they're offering is for her to, at no cost to us, uh, to look at our master plan and give us some recommendations on some options. So I figured it's kind of a no-brainer, uh, but I wanted to bring it to you. I didn't wanna make that decision laterally, so.
Who, who was it?
Jill Longbell. She was, um, uh, she was the contract person, contract planner that worked for Exodus, for, for our planning commission. When they were setting up the electricity aggregation program and getting all that paperwork and all that little stuff done. She's kind of a utility player, uh, has a good background in regional planning and various things, so. So, here.
I'd be interested in an outlook.
We haven't touched this since.
I looked at an actual research chapter.
Twelve.
No, we had a more recent update than that. Uh, we did the cultural, cultural resources, for, 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 for cultural resources chapter was the most recent one added. And I think that was sixteen or eighteen that we did that.
But since then.
Anyway, so if, if it's okay with the board, uh, I'll get back to the planning commission. I'll say, yes, please, please put us on the list and they'll let us know how they're gonna reach out to us and how they're gonna. So the, 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 the other item for our agenda tonight is to be talking about, um, possible, possible recommendations for ordinance changes. That we would bring to Warren, uh, in March. And we do have a, we do have a new zoning amendment calendar, so we know what the, what the deadlines and dates are. But basically, if we were to hold hearings in November and December, we're, we're fine. Uh, there, there is an option to, uh, if we have to do a second hearing or if we had something late. There are options in January, but it starts getting pretty dicey then and.
It's very limited for us because we're not traditionally counting.
No, this is for the SB two calendar.
Yeah.
Yeah, you could, I've already put on the, um, on our agenda is a hearing date on, uh, things January fourth and then another one on the eighteenth.
Just in case.
Well, you have to, the eighteenth would be just in case. The fourth would be in case we haven't finalized things right away. We'd have to have a date for the, any petition warrant articles.
Right.
Which is also when we usually codify what we've done. And then if all of a sudden there's any wording changes on the fourth, you always have the eighteenth as your last time to vote again, um, to get it all leveled Warren. So they're, they're in, they're in the agenda already.
Alright, okay. So, uh, Glenn and Lynn, would you like to start this discussion since you guys have been working on some of this stuff?
One of the things that I think is not on the list, but we discovered at one of our last meetings, was that with the ADU, we apparently have the fact that they need to submit elevations in, uh, the form, but it's not in the ordinance. And I think it should be in the ordinance so that they parallel each other. Now, remember the people came in and said, it's not the ordinance. And we looked it up and it wasn't. So I think if people are just looking at the ordinance before they're looking at the form, at least they know what it is they need to do. So I think we, I think that's a no-brainer. I think we need to add that.
Have we looked it up? It was, I thought for sure it was in your mind. I'm not sure.
Uh, we could, the discussion was about, uh, some people had, had a big.
Uh, well, the only thing we require is the quarter inch scale floor plan.
Okay, so, so what's the number for?
Uh, two oh six dash one.
Okay, two oh six dash, um, there's extended requirements. The owners shall provide a full plan, a quarter inch, to the foot scale. Provide a sketch plan drawn scale of the lot existing proposed structures, setbacks and parking.
But I don't think there's anything there that says that they need to have an elevation.
Or rendering or things like that.
Or rendering of the.
It's in the application, but not in the ordinance.
Right. And I think they need to parallel each other. So then we produce pretty much the same wording between the two. Since we approve the wording in the application already this year.
That's why I'm always quoted, it's not because they submitted the application, it's coming through using the form.
Where are we at with?
It could become P.
Uh, uh, what?
It could become, uh, P.
Two oh six point four P isn't a problem.
Two oh six point four P, you just add in the language that's in the application.
Some use application.
So on, on here, it just says architectural renderings, graphic displays and or photographs to describe the physical appearance of the ADU.
Right.
Is what we have in the application.
Wait, do you need that again?
Architectural renderings, graphic displays and or photographs to describe the physical appearance of the ADU.
Because they offer photographs.
Right.
Um.
But we need to have something that shows the, the.
But if, if that's the wording that's here, I think we need to put that same wording.
Well, not a, it's not a photograph, it's not gonna be accepted. It seemed to me that photographs weren't gonna be accepted.
Photographs would have to be, um, photoshopped.
Well, photographs would be if it.
You take a photograph.
It would change.
I think, I think maybe we should start with what, what our intent is and work it backwards. I guess in my mind, where I come down on this is that I want to see what it's going to look like from the, if I were to look at the property. Because the goal is for it to continue looking like a single-family, uh, residence.
But that does move differently than L, which is the sketch plan, right?
Well, they need a sketch plan too, draw to scale. But I'm thinking even.
With existing and proposed structures. So we had allowed photographs to suffice for the proposed structures, right?
Correct. So you've got K and you've got L, and I would think this would be M, and then you'd renumber the rest because, cause you want all those things you have to out, you have to submit together in one spot.
Yeah, that, that would should be good, K, L, and then if you, better to assert it and relater than remaining.
Yeah, relater is what I think. And make it a new L.
So if the goal is to make it continue to look like a house, how come the one in presidential got by, we built a whole separate house beside it?
Well, you could do a detached.
A detached.
It has to.
Looks like a garage or.
Size has to be.
But you're right. Uh, that didn't come before us, did it?
No.
And it should have.
Yep. Sure. So we didn't see that.
We didn't see that.
When did that happen?
That never came before us.
I don't even know if that happened.
And it does, and it looks like a whole, it looks like two homes on the same pump.
You see, and that, and that's, that goes contrary to what this is.
Correct.
Yeah.
When, when does that happen?
What, the last year or two? I, I think, I think this past year was the first time I drove down the street and saw it. I think this year.
So, question is, did presumably a building permit was issued and it, it went as an ADU.
For immediate.
Yeah. It would need, I mean, obviously, it's a separate building. And it never came here.
So while we're on that topic, uh, one of the items I wanted to bring up is, um, because the, the whole issue of the detached ADUs can be problematic, i.e. this, um, having a detached, uh, uh, option is not, is not a requirement on the RSA. We don't have to. It's an option. So I would actually like to propose that we remove the detached part of it and have a, have a scale back of the ADU.
Well.
Or it is.
Yeah, I, I can see where it's useful for an overly garage conversion, something like that. It, it, but certainly, um.
A conversion of another existing building on the property. I think there are times when it does work.
Yeah.
But that, but that, they never got, I was so surprised when I drove down the street and there's a whole new.
It's a house.
It's a house. On the same lot. And it never came before us, nothing else. I don't know. They just went, built it, never talked to the town.
When you say house, what, what is the size? Is it a third of the size of the existing structure?
Well, it's next to, it's, well, you wouldn't know the people, but it's a very large house on the right. And this is a small, I'm, I'm gonna guess it's close to a thousand square feet. Maybe twelve.
So if, if the main, and those houses count, that's only five hundred square feet.
And it's right next to the street.
Oh, yeah. So it's, so it's an urban side?
Yeah.
Yeah. Size-wise, it's quite alright, but it's, it's a house.
But it's a, and it's a separate building, so it shouldn't have come before the planning.
And it's the parents of the people who live in the house.
And it, it doesn't look like a garage. It looks like a little house. Oh, that's not great.
So I think maybe a little research on how the building permit got issued.
Past tense now, but.
I know, but.
Sometimes. It could, it probably happened before we adopted the initial lease permit process.
I don't think it's newer than.
Oh, I think it's new.
Yeah.
Newer than, we only did that in twenty seventeen?
Prior to that.
Oh, it's new to that.
I would say if you said twenty nineteen, I would say probably newer than that. I'd say it's the last couple of years.
I'd say it's in the last year.
Well, then how did that get done? Did it get done with a permit? Do we know?
Yeah, as far as I know, there's permits in Ireland because Robert.
Well, I would hope, if we are having trouble with this.
I mean, why I noticed.
I hope I'm having trouble with that for a second.
You're having trouble with that too?
It's, it's five and a half, three or five. Why I noticed that is that I was showing Mike Russo around and noticed that they were building a pool and a deck behind the house. And then when I did, I said, what the hell is that? I was so, because it was too grand, this is property. So I knew the property real well, knew it was new.
Wow, okay.
There's something for Richard to look at.
Well, something else to think about if, um.
Well, I'm wondering if, if it's that we shouldn't have that because it does seem to be causing some issues. Or whether the language just has to be stricter because it seems to be.
Well.
Not as, not as specific maybe that we think we're making the motion when it gets down to the permitting process.
Well, one of, one of the ways that sometimes handle it is that if they allow a detachment, it has to be in an existing accessory structure such as a barn or a garage and.
What keeps you from building a garage when I'm saying, okay, now I'm gonna add an ADU?
That's exactly what I think.
And that's what, that can happen.
That's exactly what I think.
That can happen.
And I, and I gotta say, putting my, my, I, I, I prefer the option that ADUs can exist and attached objects. I think that that's a completely legitimate, um, accessory law.
One option we talked about when I sold my house to my daughter is us building a garage to an apartment over on the same property.
Right.
Yep.
It just, there's a degree of, there's a degree of separation and privacy which would be that you can detach structure on the site for an ADU.
Fourteen hundred, fourteen, twenty?
Fourteen, forty.
Fourteen, fourteen.
Fourteen, fourteen.
It's, it's in, it's got a tax car on it, two-car garage under, house above, one bedroom, one bath.
Ooh, I, I thought you were gonna tell me it was two bedrooms.
A tax card says one one. And it was built in July of twenty twenty. And it was, uh, and checked, uh, April of this year, it was checked for the tax card for twenty twenty-one. So it's brand new.
It's brand new.
You gotta cut down through there sometime.
But it's over a two-car garage, that, that fourteen hundred square feet includes twelve car feet?
Well, my house is over two car garage too. It doesn't mean it's over two car garage. I mean, I don't know how this is designed.
We get a basket roster.
Eight fifteen. I mean, a good-sized two-car garage is twenty-four but twenty-six, and that's six hundred and twenty-four square feet.
Well, that's what I'm saying. If that's, if that's removed from the fourteen hundred, then the.
That's forty. That's.
Is it eight hundred square feet?
That's forty but thirty. It's twelve hundred square feet, so it's bigger than that.
So this is thirty, no, forty by thirty-two.
And is it a garage with a, well, in the apartment, or is it a house that just has a two-car garage? Like, I have a two-car garage too.
You got, no, you got a little picture.
Yeah.
Oh, that's a house.
That's ours.
It's a house. It's a house.
It looks like a dining room.
Yeah.
And walls.
It's, it's, it's not a garage with something else, right? It's a house.
But a garage.
The garage is.
I see that it's an accessory dwelling.
Right, but it's a house.
It looks like a house, but.
It's, it's not a garage. It's not a barn. It's not a shed.
Two simple families in front of a, uh, two single-family houses.
The house itself, the main house is three thousand square feet, thirty-one oh five for gross living area. And this is fourteen, fourteen.
And I don't know if it's got its own setting, but my guess is it might.
So it's, it's half a size. It's, it's not a third. It's half a size.
And regardless of what one was to call it, it still seems like it should come through the plan.
Oh, I don't know. I have no.
What's it saying, sir?
What's the interest?
Uh, you're right, five, five A, that's an F.
Shall not exceed one-third of the size of a, a single-family.
And it does. So I just was really surprised it didn't come through us because the regulation said.
And the rapport was always really good about.
But I, I, I understand what Glenn, I think you're saying that if that looked like a garage, and it looked like a garage, and it happened to, you know how garages have the peeps? If someone had living space above the garage, I personally don't have a problem with that as an ADU. I do think in that particular zone, that's, it's a house. I mean, there's two houses. That, that doesn't look like a single-family home anymore. Um, that could, that could look like a barn, a garage, something that automatically goes with another, a house. But that's, there's, there's a structure across the street from you that looks very similar to that, that we call a house. Um.
Because it has a right single-family living area?
Yes, yes, yes. Um, so maybe it's just that the language on what an accessory structure. And as you say, if someone wants to build, you know, if I wanted to build a garage and I could, it doesn't mean that after it's built, I can't come in to apply to the plan of going to have a new ADU, I suppose. But I don't know how to deal with that though.
So that, that's, that's where, you know, there's missing everything else. You just need to make sure, um, that it can.
You just need to make sure, uh, that it continues to have the same outward appearance.
So maybe it's something that, um, if someone wants to build something new, that's its own part of the ADU ordinance that might allow them to do that. But then you're gonna have to make it show like a garage or a, and the planning board gets to review it, and we get to review the design, so that it's still, is, still you can have it. And I would hate to have someone build something brand-new, knowing what it's going to be, but to meet the requirement that it already has to exist. They couldn't put in the plumbing and electric and all that stuff at the time they were building it new. But they still have to be building a garage or a barn, or something that's, looks like an accessory structure, not pretend accessory structure.
So, in the ordinance two oh six point two, purpose and objectives, number, the letter D, to retain the appearance of a single-family property, whether the accessory dwelling unit is contained within, connected to, or detached from a primary residential structure.
And that I don't think does. I think that looks like a two-family property.
It's two, it's two houses on a property. That's what, that's what it is.
I mean, sometimes you can have a single-family dwelling, and then maybe a little cottage in the back. You know, for a guest cottage kind of thing. I mean, this doesn't look like a little guest cottage in the back.
But even still, I don't think we allow that anymore in certain zones. Um, I know some exist because they were there prior to it. But I don't think in a single-family residential zone, even having a little cottage in the back meets the requirement.
I agree.
So I'm just thinking that we have a pledge reading where it says, you have to keep the appearance of. My concern is that the, what, what we imagine the appearance of a single-family residential property to be, I don't think is actually spelled out anywhere. And then it eventually becomes, um, you know, subjective. Clint thinks it doesn't look like a house, the rest of us do. So, does it or doesn't it? So maybe, maybe that's what has to be clarified in the ordinance. Rather than say, you can't have it at all, maybe you have to clarify a little bit more what the expectations are on what it looks like, if you.
But we say that twice. We say, I think, the purpose exception. Indeed. And, and that, again, the legal requirements, indeed, we say the ADU shall be designed so that the appearance of the property remains that of a single-family use. And I don't, I don't think you can even say a cottage then.
Yeah.
Needs that design criteria.
But certainly, this house should, should have come before us. What I meant to say, should have come before the planning board. And at that point, we would have said, this does not look like a single-family use. What can you do to design it so that it does?
Exactly, exactly.
How can you change the, so we get back to, you've gotta put the elevation in there, because you have to see what it's gonna look like. And it's gonna look like an access, you know, an accessory building on the property.
And you scale down, because.
Right. But that's what I'm saying then, to explain that, for example, a single-family structure with accessory buildings such as garage, a barn, blah, 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 so people will know what we're looking for, as opposed to, well, to me, this looks like a single-family, you know. I, I think that's probably what's missing. So, because I.
Yeah, it's hard, it's hard, it's hard to, for it to pass the straight face test that an accessory dwelling has been tried under a garage.
Correct.
Well, it has a front door. I mean, like, when I was talking about, I was gonna build a garage with a couple of doors, with some back stairway.
As soon as they do that, they made a second house on the property. I mean, that's a house.
It's a way to call it.
It is a house. I want it to be an accessory dwelling unit, but an accessory dwelling unit is, has to be subservient to the existing dwelling unit. We say size, but it also means appearance. And that is, that's, that's just separate. It's just all of a sudden.
It's got its own address.
Yeah, it's got its own address, you're right.
Yeah, it's a separate house.
Well, it, it would anyway, for, for nine-one-one safety purposes, it's gonna need to have its own.
Because the detached structure where people are living, they have to give it some sort of, um, separate.
Because they're gonna get mail, yeah.
Exactly, exactly.
Even places have, you know, twenty-one A, twenty-one B, but, so.
So where do we go from here?
I think that we need to have somebody volunteer to clarify what a single-family residential point you.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
Did you see that?
I do.
I think that, that's just my opinion. Maybe other people don't think, but. I don't think it makes sense to make somebody build a new garage, just so they can then, two months later, come back and say it's existing.
Right, and we could, we could say only those structures, only those permitted detached structures, as of the date of the adoption of the ordinance, can be used for accessory dwelling. You can do that. Of course you can.
But if you're gonna let somebody build a garage, that then wants to put a.
Yeah, and that's the argument, is a smart person's just gonna build a second structure.
That's fine.
And that's fine, I think, as long as.
They meet the ordinance, that's fine.
And that's why I think the ordinance is missing in the clarity of what we're trying to say. We all know what we think a single-family residence looks like, but I think we need to be clearer on what we think an accessory structure should look like. It doesn't mean it can look like a mini-house.
And what do we do if we catch the people who do it on their own, like the barn on Mill Road, where they put in a luxury apartment over a barn? They get a seventeen thousand dollar permit to build a barn. Then when they start advertising, it's got one hell of a barn above it.
Well, that's true.
I know we're dealing with it, but, but there ought to be some kind of penalty or something for those people, other than just upping the fee.
Well.
Well, but wait, the, in the barn, is the apartment, does the apartment comply with the ADU ordinance?
I doubt it.
According to size?
I doubt it.
Well.
We just found, we don't know anything about it. We haven't been in it yet, because we found out about it through the real estate act. And they, they had a two-bedroom septic on a four-bedroom house, and the apartment over the barn. And then when I started checking into it, they put a septic tank in for the barn apartment in the wetlands. With no leach bill. So they were pumping it.
So it's just a whole.
Just a whole.
The whole wetlands is the whole.
So then, now they're doing a plant, and they have to move the tank, which I said, I wanna witness that it's pumped and crushed and all that properly. Moving the whole system, putting a pump system, but they haven't done any of this.
But that should actually require a totally new septic system for the property.
It does, it does, because they changed.
Yeah.
And, and might not the state want the wetlands restored on anything they've done?
We're not gonna get into that, but, uh, that was a matter called real estate agents, and this house is in this many violations. I'm putting you on notice, so if you sell it without disclosing those, you know.
I hope you're doing that around to the owners.
We did to the right, we did a writing paper.
So I, I think we just need to determine, I think we've agreed that we need to change D to describe what a single-family property looks like.
And Ellen has sort of volunteered me to come up with some wording.
I think Ellen's already got some pretty good wording, that's pretty much there. And then the other thing we need to do is add that we need the elevations. I didn't mean for this to be that long.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand that. That's good. And I think that one of the things that Ellen was pointing out with this description is, you have a house that attached to a three-car garage, and you build a two-car garage to look, you know, to look like a garage and put an ADU in it. Uh, that doesn't look like a single-family house. You could put up a barn, a full barn, that's your structure. And, you know, that's where, that's where, you know, you just see.
Well, there are a lot of properties in Kingston that have a three-car garage, and then have a second garage. There's a lot of people that want second garages. I mean, that's not unusual, because they have a hobby or, you know, something. I mean, we see that all over the place.
Okay, so why don't we, why don't we table that? Take, well, we'll.
Not table.
We'll, we'll get back to it when we, when we discuss this again, when, when we'll have P.
I think in the first week of November.
The first Tuesday of our critical.
I, I would hate to see us lose the detached opportunity, but it does cause problems, I see.
Same again, Lynn?
I, I would hate to see us lose the detached opportunity.
Oh, I agree, I agree.
I agree.
But it is.
We have to be able. We have to, to. I mean, there are cases we've been given, Madison, um, Street One or whatever, it's, that's an obvious case where we didn't even go through the process. So we didn't even have.
But it went through the process.
We had another one. Went through the process, we made this whole point, we emphasized that it had to have a barn door on it. Functional, um, and so far, that's hasn't happened, but the.
We didn't finish it either.
They finished it, so that's why. It's a non-issue at this point.
So, so at any rate, the, uh, yeah, it's, it's an enforcement. I, I think that this board, whoever's on it, can, we can expect to be able to look at plans and say, this does, this does look like a single-family residence after it's built, or this doesn't. And if it doesn't, this is what you have to do to make it look like, uh, what does, single-family does. But I, I think, you know, it might be useful to firm up that language, but bottom line is that that's about as thorough as you can get.
I think there's enough language in the ordinance that, that the board has enough to work with to make a decision. When it sees something in front of it, is this gonna look like a single-family residence, or is it not?
I think you're right.
Is, is there a way to add more words to it, maybe? And we can look at doing that. I can, I can.
Once again, Lynn, Lynn was saying we need to move one thing into the other one. I don't quite get the same architectural drawings. I think it should say drawing. Because it, it makes people think they need to hire an architect. And it doesn't, we just want a decent drawing of the house.
I agree with that, because I had a phone call from somebody that asked about that, and it said architectural drawings, so I have to hire an architect.
That's on the application, right?
Yeah.
We, we just.
But it's a, it's a.
We're gonna have some.
Yeah.
Oh.
Elevations.
Elevations are elevations.
Right.
You could say detail though.
You can say building elevations, building elevations can be drawn by an engineer. Um, they do it all the time. Architectural writers definitely done by an architect. That's, that's same.
I mean, you could broaden it, I mean, you could use a much broader term rather than being specific and just say something like, you know, graphical representation.
Let's find anything that just stood there.
That demonstrates to the board what the property will look like when it's built.
Not to jump out of Turner order, but, uh, one thing I hope we're gonna address is the issue of the, how the person thinks they got around this one pool issue. That that's added, because structure is not in two places.
I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm a last page looking, just.
I'm actually trying to think about that.
I changed C three.
Okay, 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 before we jump to that, are we, are we, are we done with ADU for the moment?
Yeah, I think we got.
We are, you're done.
Do you have enough?
No, I'm done with it. I.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, my preference, my, my preference would be to eliminate detached ADUs, because it is, they are fraught with peril. But I understand too, that if we did that, it's gonna really limit, you know, uh, the, the, the additional housing options that we're trying to gain here for folks, so. But if we are gonna keep it, I really would like to.
Tighten it.
Tighten it up a bit.
Okay. So we'll have language on ADU for the November meeting.
Yeah. Anybody else wanna talk anymore about ADU? Okay.
God.
All right. So, Lynn and Lynn, why don't we continue on?
When we were talking about, um, the new distribution center, there was some wording that made some of the CFP approvals and such difficult, because we didn't have a definition for detrimentally affect or for enhance. And, you know, I think it's hard to enhance a water supply, I'm trying to tell how you're going to do that. And I'm not sure how, we could use, I'm not sure what we would be using for this. But, um, it says now, the proposals will not detrimentally affect the quality of the groundwater contained in the aquifer by directly contributing to pollution. I mean, it's hard to say that nothing will ever happen. And they're talking, I couldn't find the phrase, but we were talking about enhance, I couldn't find that. I'm like, who the ordinance is. Did you find that, Glenn?
No, I didn't.
So I could see, what? But we were looking at enhancing, um, the water quality. And I'm not sure if there's a way to enhance, you know, a definition for enhancing it either.
Well, I like, I thought we could, but it's a concept, it's more likely to go up in the ordinance that says the proposals will use proper best management, um, tools to ensure that the quality of the groundwater contained in the aquifer isn't polluted or decreased. Because then that means that they're, they have a range of things that they can, that they can offer to show that that's not gonna happen. And we have a way of looking at it through the time engineer and say, we don't think that's adequate.
I think that's excellent.
You know, so that we make it a design issue instead of a subjective feeling issue.
I love that.
Because they're, when, when they design, whatever they design, is going to come with some figures that that design is going to result in as far as, um, dealing with groundwater on-site, or, or infiltration or whatever. And Des is gonna have a feel for whether or not that's realistic. And I know that, because he asks that question every time he looks at these. It's the most common thing that he seems to make engineers redo, is their calculations as to whether or not they are androids or not. And with the aquifer, that's, that's probably, I mean, the use, the use can't inherently pollute. So we have some prohibited uses, and that takes those out of question. But there is the ability to pollute if you're not handling or trying to infiltrate this property. And so if we make this condition one that relies on engineering parameters, I think it, it becomes much less subjective. Now, I haven't prepared that wording here, but I would be willing to fix that so that we change this conditional use requirement from one, uh, what seems subjective to one that's based on measurable engineering results. If the board's okay with that, that's a motive.
I say, that's great.
And if, and if you're gonna cite something like best manager practices, probably good to point to which ones.
Oh, yeah, I'll, I'll follow, I'll follow the stormwater manual. The stormwater manual that DES wants all the engineers to use anyway.
Enhances in the shoreline protection ordinance?
It is.
It's the first, uh, item under the authority and purpose. Sort of protect, maintain, and enhance the water quality of the great ponds over our river tributaries.
That's two oh two dash one?
Uh, two oh five dash one.
Two oh five.
It wasn't in the aquifer, though, which is weird.
Oh, there you go. Okay.
Enhance the water quality, yeah.
And my, Lynn and I disagree a little bit on, on this. So change the shoreline protection title to match the states. I don't think anybody, I don't think any real person gets calling shoreline protection water quality protection.
Yeah.
I think that our definition, our title actually is a better indication of what we're trying to do than changing it to the states. The states, I, I look at that and I think, well, water quality protection, just that could be a flood zone, it could be an aquifer zone, it could be, uh, shoreline protection zone.
My guess doesn't refer to the other things that are contained in the shoreline, so the aquatic species or any of that you don't get when you see water.
I, I just, I just think that it's better for us to keep our ordinance called shoreline protection.
That's fine. Good argument.
It's a subsurface water, we have an aquifer protection. For the subsurface water, we have an aquifer protection.
Exactly.
So it's more specific and.
And it's clear.
Less vague is good.
And it's not ambiguous, which I think the state has made theirs completely ambiguous as to what it's doing until you. And it's not ambiguous, which I think the state has made theirs completely ambiguous as to what it's doing until you.
Good. Next.
That one was easy.
The next one was looking at innovative zoning. Just wondering if we should change the title to something that better describes the, the type of zoning that it is, it's more of a cluster or, uh, higher density or.
Oh.
Something like that, when I say innovative, people, you know, what are you talking about? So they don't even gotta go looking in the town to find out what they have for different types of things.
Sometimes, sometimes they're called, uh, like conservation subdivisions.
Right, or open space.
Or open space, something like that.
Even better, just something that I think better describes innovative.
Open, open space conservation design is pretty popular and lets people know that there's, that that's a huge part, it's a huge element. And in our innovative zone ordinance, that is a huge element. You, you have to have a large portion preserved and under easement with some stewardship. And so it's, it's a, it's a good match.
So I'd go with that.
You are right, I, I have a lot of people asking.
Open, open space subdivision design?
Open space conservation.
Open space conservation.
Subdivision.
What subdivision?
Subdivision, because, because it does pertain to only subdivision.
Correct.
So open space conservation subdivision, no design.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Innovative sounds like you're using solar.
Yeah, innovative is, is really, it's really ambiguous.
Yeah.
Or village concepts and things like that.
Well, I think, I think we modeled it, uh, at the time, after something that the state planning office had.
Yeah.
They had what they called, I think they still do use it, uh, a booklet for innovative zoning tools, and I think we just used that word.
Okay.
Folks good, folks good with that?
Yeah.
So for permitted uses, you know, we were talking about townhouse and multifamily units of, I've got some typos in there, sorry about that. Up to six individual units per structure. Just curious about why the six-unit restriction, why just townhouse or multifamily, why not, um, garden style? Those are the kinds of things that, that kind of.
Six units in an apartment complex is ridiculous.
Yeah.
I mean, most of them are ten, twelve, twenty.
It is, it is the provision that stopped dead-end traps, because I heard Lynn saw on the, on the one oh seven.
Yeah. I mean, it just seemed.
It, it, it's, it is, uh, and we've never seen it done, and there's a reason we've never seen it done, because it's foolhardy, it just doesn't, it doesn't work. It just doesn't work.
I mean, sixteen would be reasonable, twelve would be better. And then you've got three on each side. You want a cluster, you wanna put as much together as you can.
You do.
But skills limit the total number.
We were, we were being crazy restrictive when we did that.
What was the rationale for that?
To be crazy restrictive.
To not allow.
To not have a big, we didn't, we feared the density of methylene. And so we.
It was a member of apartments.
Hold, hold the discussion for a second.
Okay.
And, and, and I understand that, I mean, if you go to Seaford, right, Master of Brats, you look across the street, you have a huge multifamily, you look beside you, and there, another four building, multifamily, and it isn't pretty, it isn't pretty, and they haven't aged well.
And yet you look at what they're doing now in Exeter, and some of the other places, and.
Completely different.
I mean, some of those are condo units, and they're selling for five, six hundred thousand dollars a unit, and they're garden style.
Yeah. I mean, I, we, I think we do need to provide flexibility, you know, we have to change that density level.
Are you suggesting?
But I'm not, by non-favor of similar apartments in, in things.
About, not, not what?
At non-favor of similar apartments that are down in Seaford.
Oh, I know.
Those have sixty units per building or so, and that's.
But if you went sixteen, you're reasonable.
Yeah.
Would that be, would that be eight oh eight, is that what they would do?
And you could require an eight oh eight.
So it would be more like the ones that are on one oh eight, the new, those two multifamily structures that have been, that have been there forever. They're always occupied, they're, they've always looked good.
But we can't go more than three stories because of our fire regulations.
Right, right.
So they're not gonna go more than three stories anyway.
And I think you've gotta do something that allows, um, I don't know, say, make use? Like that one of the buildings might have a laundromat or something, and then apartments over it.
Or a gym.
Or a community room. Or a community room.
Community room and gym, and that sort of thing.
Because that's what allows you to get it out of the slumlord-type apartment, is that you put an accessory.
Some sort of amenity that, that.
I mean, you probably have laundry in the apartment for the, for the, um, condos, but, you know, but things like gyms and that sort of thing.
But we need apartments and not condos.
Yeah, we do.
I agree, I, I agree that every small town in New Hampshire should have way more apartments than there would exist now. In Hudson, they're only the ones that existed before zone.
How I picture that property is putting a cluster of apartments up there and then a walking trail, you know, making it a nice place, so you can get pretty good dollars for your rent, but yet not out of sight.
So if we did sixteen units in a building, that makes sense.
To Florida, no. We are anyway, but.
Yeah, we pretty much are.
Yeah, I agree with that statement.
And if they, and they can do a garage.
I think we had an issue with the height.
I could say, isn't the height?
The height limit was a problem.
I think it's forty-five feet.
I don't think that's what it is in that zone.
No, I, I think, no, did you say forty-five? I think it is forty-five.
I think that zone was the last for several, which only, the housing.
The only one that allows one piece housing.
So it's commercial.
Commercial one.
One.
Right.
Is it commercial one?
Yeah.
Oh, we look at that one.
It seems small.
Forty-five feet to twenty, but I thought it was a lot less than that. More likely in a apartment.
Here, pay, next one, pay, building cannot exceed forty-five feet, take it from grade to highest roof.
In C, the building height would be maximum thirty-five, if C one.
Do we have a workforce housing zone that says something different?
Which if you, it's limited to two floors.
Fine.
Yes.
Does the workforce housing, which also owns for A or B, is that less than forty-five feet?
Okay, I'm gonna page roll here from you, to your page one oh eight nine.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, okay, so on page one oh eight nine, it says forty-five feet, and on page one oh eight dash five, it says thirty-five.
I knew there was the thirty-five in some place, but thirty-five.
Requires multifamily dwellings and development, thirty-five.
If you're gonna limit.
There's one of them because they're, what's that thing where it's, um, there's workforce housing, another one that's restricted.
Age-restricted?
No, it wasn't age-restricted, it was, um.
Affordable?
Well, yeah, but I think it, uh, market, there was a market rate, and then there was a.
The only one, the only place we have market rate and non-market rate is in the age-restricted.
Correct.
Okay.
Thirty, thirty-five feet to eight, another.
Thirty-two feet was in.
We say thirty-five and, and the. We have a specific section in C one for workforce housing.
So thirty-five is specifically for multifamily dwellings and developments, thirty-five.
Right, so you get.
Uh, commercial buildings can be forty-five.
That's, that's what it is, that's what it is. But in that section in C one, we say that the number of dwellings, ten of more than eight. So we should.
So if you have market ceiling for the really tall ones, and then that's eighteen, and then you gotta put between them, and you gotta put underneath, that's twenty. So you've got another ten feet to go up for the, thirty-five probably works.
And we also say in the multifamily zone, that a multifamily development shall not go more than forty dwelling.
Yeah, that seems silly to me too.
That was also accomplished in firm.
Thirty-five feet is very, very close to what you need, you really ought to go to forty.
In order to have two.
If you've got a twenty-foot building and a twelve-inch roof, that means you've got about seventeen feet. You get twenty feet, that puts you at thirty-seven.
So why does it matter that it's different from commercial versus residential?
It does, it will, we're just saying that that's.
It really does.
I know, but my point is if you say that commercial could go at forty-five feet, why do you say?
Exactly.
Yeah, well, you.
But I tell you probably the reason for that is the fire department, because there's.
Well, they had.
Or you may wanna put something in there that says, no living quarters above X number of feet. Well, if you're limited to a story, you're doing that anyway.
Right.
So even if they put in a twelve-foot, twelve-foot.
You're like, something sort of cathedral things on the, I, I don't know what you do.
So why don't we just do the forty-five feet so it's consistent?
If you do forty-five feet, you cover.
And then it also means that if they wanted to, they could put the garages under, like some of them do.
Yeah.
You know, with the elevators and such.
Well, then you get into the second floor being too high for the fire car, so.
No, I'm just saying if you have the forty-five feet, it gives you a little bit more space.
You still can't go any higher than forty-five feet.
And so we should change, we should change into these sixteen units per structure.
Yeah.
And then we have to change to forty dwelling units.
Yeah.
Per development.
To what, to how many?
Hundreds. Why, why are we saying?
Yeah.
Why are we even limiting that?
Why are we limiting that? That, that was, that was the issue with the one that came in. With the three parcels, they ended up having like a hundred and twenty acres or something? And we were saying that because, because unless they merge, or no, if they did merge, then they were one unit and all they could have is four.
Right.
And that's.
Yeah, so they're gonna be able to keep two separate lots to do.
Three separate lots.
Yeah, it is ridiculous.
So it ought to be whatever the land will support.
Right, sixteen-unit structures, and then the developer comes in and says how many sixteen-unit structures they think can fit on the site.
Based on.
And if we don't agree on that, we cut the thing.
Exactly.
Do we have something that says, you know, based on what we say in place of its density and blah, blah, blah?
Well, we know the septic system's gonna depend on.
The septic, the well, the parking.
Yeah.
Covered.
Yeah.
Do we do, you know, lot coverage, is that classified?
When you say no single contiguous area of apartments on a parcel should have a density greater than four dwelling units per acre.
Is that, I don't know if that's reasonable or not.
That doesn't seem reasonable to me either.
Would you say?
No single contiguous area of apartments on a parcel should have a density greater than four dwelling units per acre.
And when you say dwelling units.
Four dwelling units.
Is that a individual building for one person, or is it?
It's a four-unit building.
You can't, you can't say that because you don't know how big the dwelling unit is.
Right.
Yeah.
You could put in four, sixteen hundred square foot apartments, or you could put in four eight hundred square foot apartments. You could put in three bigger.
Do we care about that? I mean, what would our density normally be for, say, innovative building, or whatever we're calling it, or?
We, and that would require perhaps to be the same as the convention subdivision.
Right, because they have to leave open space and all that kind of stuff.
Correct.
And.
So they have to show the conventional subdivision, uh, meeting our requirements, and then they can get that number of lots in places closer together under innovative zone.
So the only, the only requirements is what we're specifically saying at this point, but is there a reason that that should be true? The four units per acre, or is that ridiculous?
I think four dwelling units per acre, when we're saying that a building, well, we're saying that a building can now have, we said multifamily dwelling shall not go more than sixteen dwelling units. If we go with this next thing, in order to have sixteen dwelling units, you would have to have four acres of oil. Oh, is that so bad?
Well, but you're talking about the contiguous upland though, not the total.
Correct.
But you could put a sixteen-unit building on an acre of upland.
I would think, I think that's something we ought to play with and come back and remember. I don't think we can solve this.
I don't think we can solve it either, but I think that, that density section is something that has to be worked on.
Yeah.
You're right.
So.
We ought to play with some sizes and just see, try to beat the system and see what we come up with.
Richard, do you wanna do that?
Yeah, I'll work with Lynn with it.
Yeah, 'cause maybe we just look at some, let's look at some standards for the news, we do have multifamily.
I've, I've got some typical apartment layouts that we could use.
Yeah, let's look at that. All right, we, we.
I mean, when you look at the number of apartments that Jim DeFrain put over the clubhouse, and the amount of space that that clubhouse sits on. Just saying.
Well.
I don't want to refer to anything Mr. DeFrain does as my model, I'm sorry.
I know, that's wrong.
But I'm just saying that I'm.
I wasn't using it as a model, I was just using it as something that, that consisted to get approved by us, that's all.
And I wish that doesn't take you twenty minutes.
It will, but it'll make it to here.
But it's just maybe on stage.
Yeah, you brought attention to it now, huh? Okay, let's, let's keep rolling.
So the next one was, if you remember when they did the subdivision on Marshall Road, it, they had gone in with a cluster and then changed it to, um, street subdivision, because, the conventional, because of the two hundred feet from the public right of way. Should we be looking at that as well, so that they could put drainage and such in that two hundred feet from the, from the highway? So they couldn't do anything two hundred feet back from the highway, when what's wrong with doing drainage and that kind of thing? If they could've done drainage there, then they would, we'd have a nice thirteen-unit, uh, cluster and a lot of open space.
One inch or something like that.
Right.
Yeah, that's too bad.
So just saying, you know, maybe we need to be looking at that as well.
We made that change in Nebraska.
You did.
We, we made the change, that you could put drainage features in the, in the hundred-foot, um, peripheral setback on cluster development.
You could?
That we, we, we weren't, we weren't allowed to before twenty twenty, and in twenty twenty we changed it.
So Glenn, can you maybe provide us with an example of, if you've already, if you've already got something that works well there? Maybe we could, maybe we could steal that, or something like it.
Should we have a density bonus to encourage cluster zoning and open space? We looked at that, I think we looked at that ten years ago, I served on a subcommittee to look at that before I was on the planning board. And, uh, Ernie Landry sat on that, and we decided that yes, we should, and then nothing happened.
Do you have a recommendation for what kind of percentage?
I would think at least twenty.
Twenty percent?
Yeah, I mean, if you get ten house lots, now you've got twelve. You know, maybe even more, when you start looking at it, because now you're clustering them all together. And I would think if you're gonna encourage the cluster to encourage the open space, then we should do something to really encourage it by letting them.
Have something, I mean, don't we have something in an ordinance someplace about, um, density bonuses, or maybe that's just our duty?
I don't think.
We offer no density bonuses in the town, I think, for anything. Newfields has a whole series of things, they offer density bonuses for, if you, if you don't, um, have, if you don't develop any frontage lots, um, that can be seen from the, the entryway to the development to get a percentage, and there's, they have all sorts of things that they offer bonuses for.
That's Newfields?
Yeah, we looked at that a while ago.
We did, I, I often went to the town, uh, do we use them or something?
And it made sense, because it was all conservation-oriented, which is what open spaces is oriented.
It's in their conservation subdivision ordinance.
Do you want to get that to me and I'll give it to the board, so they'll, we won't maybe have any lightnings for the next meeting, but the board can look at it between now and then and propose ideas or something.
Yeah, I can answer that.
Okay, and I'll send it out.
Then one of the next things we talked about when it came again to the distribution center was allowing for previous paper, or not?
We need to talk about that for sure, because it's a growing thing everywhere.
Well, we encourage, um, this statement, President, this, encourage the use of low-impact design in green materials for designing construction park facilities. If we use the guidance that's in NHDES's, um, uh, stormwater manual, one of, they have a whole section on the benefits of. one of, they have a whole section on the benefits of, um, impervious pavement. And the fact that one of the, one of the metrics used by AOT, they give their permits, is the amount of impervious, the amount of continuous impervious surface. Uh, because once, once you go over ten percent, it's anticipated, it's expected that you're degrading water. Ten percent is really low. That's, 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 that, that's stating that even if ninety percent of your lot is developed on, if you have areas, if you have a mass area of ten percent that is developed on, you are, that you are hurting surface.
So is that why, um, Lowe's or Kmart or whatever it is in Newington only did a porch and another lot?
Perhaps so that they could, so they could get a credit for disrupting the overall impervious pavement.
Why aren't we gonna go someplace and look at interesting new parking things and then comb it in and whatever?
Yeah, we were gonna do it, but what we, I canceled twice because we got, we got busy. But yes, for, for the age of, we're, we're.
Or someone, could someone from UNH come and talk to us about this?
Yeah, that, that's actually, he was going to come and he was gonna offer people to go look at the.
We oughta some, some way tie that into stormwater management too. Maybe have those people here, I mean, not the engineers, but the people like the enforcement, Rich's person and stuff, when we have them come and speak.
So that can be part of.
A credit.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, does, does this have to happen before the end of the year, or?
No, I know, I mean.
I'm just saying that they probably have recommendations and blah, blah, blah.
Oh, they do, they have very much support for, uh, impervious pavement.
And then they can come talk to us about it, and maybe that would be helpful for the board to, and the public watching the meetings, to understand what we were proposing and why. I don't know, maybe nobody wants to wait, but I just remember when I'm like, why aren't we trying to address this yet before I had?
Yeah, I canceled twice because our, our work is back there. But they love to come talk to us.
So does anyone want to do that?
Yeah, yeah, I think good.
So you want to raise that?
No, set it up for maybe February. I'm just thinking we're gonna have all the board articles and everything else between now and then.
Well, that's one of the questions, well, this may, this may affect the learner.
Well, that's true.
It might affect us in writing.
Okay.
I mean, and I would tell them if we don't wanna.
If they don't, if the only, the only way that we would incorporate is if they came in and spoke with us at our first meeting in November.
Yeah, so you can.
But just tell them we don't want a four hour lecture, we want the short version.
Yeah, yeah. I would, I would, I would, I would.
Yeah.
What is, what is the date for the November meeting, Ellen?
November second.
Yeah, maybe give them thirty minutes. Give them a time frame.
It's actually probably not anything, you know. The next one is getting all the structure definitions.
Yes.
That's match.
That's what I was talking about.
Yep.
So.
So the big rule is a, is a structure.
Right, two oh one, two and and, preamble two seventeen should read as what is found in preamble two seventeen. And so that's an easy change to make. In addition, if you go to the next page, um, on that page, um, one ten six eight, which is commercials number three, to have structure defined that same way in the language that has a different standard for structure right now, we would change that so that it would be as found in article two, B seventeen, which is the overall structure definition.
So that, who's doing that?
I, that, yeah, I, that wording actually is the old one.
So that'll be quick enough for you to just put a piece of paper for people to load on as a proposal?
Yes.
So, okay, so.
Yeah. And then the only other thing on there is if you're hearing new streets, why have to have a hundred and eight homes and a maximum of one thousand feet long?
I can tell you why that originally went in. It made no law to be valid. Not the eight homes, the eight homes was put in after the fact, um, by a different board member. But the reason why it's a thousand feet in length, when that was written, it was before we were sprinkling buildings, it was because it's the length of a hose.
But they don't use hoses.
No, that's what I mean.
But now they use fire, they use hoses.
And that was great, that's insane. I know when this was written, I was one of the people who did it, it was a long time ago. And at the time, it was because that's what all the other towns used, because it was the length of a hose. So if there was a, a, a house at the end of the street that somehow the road was blocked, they could put the fire out. And this was over twenty years ago that was put in, so that was, that was.
It's more important that the road had a turn around than ever lived.
That's right.
Yeah, as I say, this was decades ago.
So we agreed, we agreed to, uh, take that out?
Yeah, I don't think that's the.
Well, we, we agree to take that out, or we're not saying that there is no cul-de-sac weather?
Oh, no, no, we're just saying the mid, the, the minimum of eight homes and the maximum of a thousand feet comes out.
The minimum of eight homes was brought in after the fact, it was brought up by state breaks. And it was also because, um, they wanted to make sure that if somebody was putting in a road in a cul-de-sac, that there would be enough taxes coming from the houses to be able to pay for plowing and all that kind of stuff. And that's why it was minimum of, you can put in more, but you couldn't go build a road that had less than eight houses on it, because it was cost.
That's not an issue anymore.
It's not, no.
The whole thing is that you've got a thousand feet of road, and you need two hundred foot frontage for everything. You really can't put more than eight anyway.
Well, it wasn't that you couldn't put more.
Because you've got the cul-de-sac, you've gotta have those.
It wasn't that you couldn't put in more houses, you just couldn't put in less.
So we can take that out?
I, we went to the board, I didn't want more for.
Yeah, because the, the problem was, where are the, like, um, that stuff only has five lots on it?
Yeah.
And the town is forever doing a road for five homes, um, and the maintenance costs for that road forever always may exceed the taxes you get for those houses forever always. Um, because we didn't wanna see a lot of stuck roads.
That's why, it was to make sure that if someone's gonna go plow a road, it was gonna be for a minimum of eight houses. So that was a highway planning board selectmen discussion. Uh, I don't know if it's still valid, I guess you'd have to talk to the road agent, um, to get his input. I don't believe five common cares about the thousand feet anymore. Because if anything, if it's far away from a pond and all that stuff, they're gonna be sprinkled anywhere.
Well, the other thing, should make a move that you can ponder this, this training system.
That's what I'm saying, I don't think it's.
But it's midway down, so it's still within a thousand feet of the house.
Maybe this was done in the eighties.
Yeah. Don't, don't we have a road length that exists?
Can't go past it. It's in a, it's in some, something with subdivision.
Okay.
But I guess for the eight home things, that would be, I think you could probably get input from the highway road agent and select it, and see if there's something.
And I think there's justification, having a number something like that just for the reasons that we put it in in the first place, but. But I agree, it's probably not something that we should be deciding all by ourselves.
Yeah, so what, what we say now, if you have no cul-de-s, uh, cul-de-sac roads, one in general exceeds one thousand feet length.
Okay. I mean, it's pretty common for a town to have a limit on, on road length, is it not, Glenn?
Um, yes. Some of those far exceed a thousand feet, yes.
I could think of a lot of them in Kingston that are more than a thousand feet.
Yes, I mean, a thousand, a thousand feet, um, seems long, but it really isn't. And, uh, when I was a young naive planner, my arguments against one cul-de-sac was always, oh my God, what happens when the tree falls down the road in a storm? And emergency vehicles can't get to the person, I mean, our account, I think, we can roll, but when Armageddon hits, it just, nothing's gonna save everybody.
Well, that makes you feel much better, um.
Well, that's it, it really is, yeah.
And I think at the time, the discussion also was that if you're going to have a cul-de-sac more than a thousand feet, you had to have a future connecting point to be able to start having all these little roads that didn't connect to anything else. Now, I don't know if anyone thinks that's still valid or not, I just.
I mean, we have, we have that requirement.
That's, that requirement is, is irrespective of the road length, it's, any cul-de-sac is supposed to show a, a putrid connection.
Which is fine, we can just leave that and.
Yeah. I think a lot of this came about because of, uh, the neighborhood down our front road that, you know, like, Rams Way has four houses or something on it, and so, you know, there's a lot of long dead ends there that probably at one time it caused mortar plow and they were getting tax dollars out of it. But now that's not the case.
Well, I also think that it gave us to the road agent that it was like, don't, don't, don't keep encouraging all these little small things, because then to plow them, it was logistically a problem. But maybe that's, that was a long time ago, if you saw.
Right, and now there's bigger and better plows and they don't tell them to pick up anymore, and they want the bigger on the road. So, so what about that one now?
So if someone, someone.
I don't thi, I don't think we need to have a minimum length for ground.
Or maximum.
A maximum length for ground, but I just think we should let it go.
I think we just need to coordinate that with Rich and make sure he didn't have an opinion on it.
Yeah, I mean, it does, there, there are expenses to these, a thousand feet, so that's a fifth of a mile. That's, that's not very long. But maybe, for instance, we, we eliminated our cul-de-sac maximum requirement in Brentwood about fifteen years ago. And we have a number of rules now that approach a mile line with but one element. The expense there isn't necessarily to the town, but it is an expense, well, it's, it's expensive for like buses, for, um, school buses, because they have to go all the way in and come all the way out with no, instead of maybe a network somewhere. And if you have to do that five or six times to the town, like you do in Brentwood, that's expensive for, for the postal service, it's expensive for, um, garbage pickup, because if you're trucking, only accomplish just one thing. Um, but it has to, I think it's not so bad with garbage, because you typically do that on both sides of the road.
Let me, uh, talk about Rich about the road length, we'll talk about that in a minute.
Yeah, can you talk to us a little bit about the issue of the eight minimum on a cul-de-sac? I mean, on a, uh, what are we talking about?
So four or five years ago, it, it cost three hundred dollars a running foot to build a road. I don't think there's a lot, uh, if you have a thousand, you have a thousand foot road, it's three hundred thousand dollars then. I'm sure it's much higher now, because everything's gone up. So I don't think there's an awful lot of builders that are gonna build long roads to a house without having enough house lots to sell and put houses on to support the road.
Well, especially if we make the cluster housing and open space accountable, um, they won't need to.
I mean, I don't think the developers care.
And I don't think it's.
They, they, they don't, they don't care about the maintenance costs or whether they're getting it back, because they're getting all their money upfront.
They're getting their money upfront, but they need to get their money upfront, and to do that, you've gotta sell your lots. So, you know, right there.
The postal services are gonna be an issue because they don't allow them to.
Well, they, that's, that's one of the reasons that they changed it.
Yeah.
They're, they're mandating, they're mandating.
Losses during the time.
At the end of the, at the end of the roads.
They're mandating the chaos, they're mandating all kinds of things, and now they're taking three days longer to develop, uh, to, uh, deliver mail. Pretty soon there won't be a postal service.
Hope that doesn't happen. Okay, so Rich, you wanna follow up on that?
So those were the changes, when did I come up with that?
What about on your second page here?
This is all, sorry, I keep you on.
Yeah, we already talked about that, that was.
Oh, sorry.
It's really just a continuation, making sure structure is defined, defined.
Yeah, okay, okay. Just one more thing on the, um, on the issue of, uh, road length and so forth. That, that's in our regulations.
So it's not tied in?
So it's not tied.
We can waive it.
We can always waive it, and I think that was one of the arguments way back when too, that, you know, for, for good justification, it would be easy to, you know, to allow it to go home.
It's also true, the low impact development, that's an outdoor standard, it's in cycling. So that's not tied to that one either, so we're suggesting that that, you know, February, we got that law.
About the parking thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, this year, we didn't have the February law, because we have the distribution stuff.
Right, we had, we had two sixty-six.
But normally, if you have a little February law, we can talk about stuff.
And that might not happen this year either, because we've got some big stuff coming up.
That is, I, I just be.
The, um, across the street, well, at the, where the new intersection of Marshall Road and one twenty-five would be the, the first part of that development is coming into ZBA next week.
Oh.
For gas station, convenience store, fast food, so. So stuff is happening.
Get some more tax money.
They've already done all their illegal tax bits and done some work. All right.
Anybody that cares for it, stop two to.
Two to the. Okay, all right, we need to wrap this up.
In this one game playoff, the last time we did that was in tenth grade.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And we lost.
All right. Are we all set with the zoning stuff for now?
Yes.
The only thing I wanted to, I just, I, this isn't to discuss to see if people want me to send it or they're not interested. When the bank was opening and all that kind of stuff, and they had all the brand opening and all that, everybody was doing one of these, because they didn't have permits for brands, but.
Signing.
Brand opening, signing, and we had a meeting about one misses about it. So I asked Robert if it might be a good idea if we did have something, so that we didn't have to pretend we didn't see it anymore. So I just pulled up class stats, they had a whole brand opening package, and what you can do, and blah, blah, blah. I think this is too long, it says, the duration is one week, I think we should make it like thirty days.
Yeah.
But that would be the board discussion, but I don't know whether anyone wanted to see it for discussion to.
Why don't you work on that?
Well, I have it, I can, so I can, but I didn't know if anyone wanted to.
Why don't you send it out to everybody we can talk about?
That's what I do, I just want people to.
Because we've already talked about that before, and I thought it was a good idea. And we'll talk about it at the first meeting.
And Ellen went on vacation and all the feather banners went up.
Well, that's another thing, yeah. We gotta talk about those because. They're everywhere again.
Everywhere.
Yeah.
Is it something we want to enforce or not enforce, or we want to?
Feather banners, they, they.
It's one right across the street, can you leave advertising ice cream?
So those feather banners, which are not trying, not saying they should or shouldn't be, but are not permitted by the sign owners, suddenly appeared all over town. And I'm not saying they should or shouldn't.
Can the selectmen put a letter in the paper reminding all businesses that they are not permitted in town, rather than talk to anyone?
Why don't send a letter to all the businesses?
I'm, I'm fine with that.
That remains because the product.
I got a lot of letters.
Is probably gonna be approved. We're gonna have a section in the carriage down news about E P every week, about Kingston, did you know? And it's gonna have zoning things in it, it's gonna have code things in it, it's gonna have fun things in it. You know, it's not gonna be strictly enforcement type stuff, it's gonna have good stuff.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Kinda like just reminding people.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Uh, we'll probably go to every committee and say, give us three things or something, so we, we're gonna give them like two or three months at a time. And they're gonna use it for. And they're gonna use it for fillers where they can.
Yeah, I thought that was a good idea. We came up with that.
You know, it's kinda, we get into some of these things like feather banners. No one thinks that's not allowed.
Yeah.
Because, you know, they're everywhere.
Maybe nobody thinks to go to the ordinance and look.
Well, half the time they don't know they're going to, when they're to build a house.
Yeah.
So my question is, one said, suggested that the selectmen sent a letter to all the businesses just reminding them they're not allowed. Are we asking the selectmen to do that?
No, I think we need, I think we need to have a discussion on how we feel about feather banners. In November.
Not today.
In November.
Okay.
But with that being said, I think you're putting, you ought to read the whole sign ordinance and say if there's anything else in there that, I mean, like, the commercial real estate side.
Yeah.
You know, when we're studying traffic speed, how big a sign should be, Phil Stone's sign really wasn't out of proportion. It was against our sign ordinance, but it really wasn't that big.
All they had to do was get a permit.
Right, but we're saying.
Yeah, have it on their own property.
Right now, they're saying you can put a commercial sign out.
Well, you can. Up to a certain size.
Size, but our size is too small based on the speed limit. Speed limit.
Anyone on one twenty-five can have a larger size if they wanted. They just need a permit. That's all. They just need a permit. And their own property. Which I think is more the issue.
Now, that's not our issue either.
Well, we need to get first.
Before we close.
We can't close. There are things.
I wanna talk.
All right, and, and, uh, we have a request to go into non-public session as well, but we should end with that. So are we, are we, are we gonna talk more about the sign stuff? I mean, in November, is that the plan?
That's all we've given you with that.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Glenn?
I was gonna ask Richard if the board is willing to call a subnurber and ask about whether or not we should be thinking or accepting any applications on John Galloway's property.
Uh, which property?
Because apparently there's a cease and desist on that huge stockpile of stuff down.
I don't know if there is a pre-made.
Because the ZB A will be looking at something next week. Uh, for a variance, a height variance, but maybe they shouldn't be looking at that, but I'm sure that they're not going to.
I'll check into it.
Know that.
I have no idea. I haven't, I've, I've saw the application, but the, uh.
Because the action has nothing to do with the stockpile, but if there is a cease and desist on the property, that's an issue.
Well, actually, if you.
If there's a pro violation on the property that's unassociated with the, the application, I'm not sure someone would feel as strong.
Which property are we talking about?
Um, Door Road.
Yeah, we're gonna see, um, uh, they.
There's a huge stockpile.
Yeah, yeah.
That has occurred over the last.
Yeah, the one with all the concrete.
Five years or so.
Cause one now, you can see it easily driving down one twenty-five.
Yeah.
And they're coming forward to the zoning.
They're coming forward to the ZB A for, uh, variance for height.
For what?
For height.
They wanna go, uh, height limit is what, thirty-five?
Yeah.
And they wanna go to eighty something?
Seven, for a stack eighty.
Yeah, it's, um, but, but.
But I'm not sure that they, I'm not sure, I think that we should know from council whether the ZB A should even be considering this.
Well, this brings up, I don't know if you've been following a planning, the discussion about, uh, whether planning boards can take up issues on, on properties that aren't in current compliance. And I believe that the state statute requires us to do that. Um, it doesn't mean that the existing, um, non-compliance issues aren't being dealt with by the selectmen, you know, the enforcement committee. But you can still, uh, here on, on another issue on that same property, you know, request, um, doesn't mean you can't put stipulations in, like, you know, the property has to be in compliance or whatever else.
So would you be willing to ask that question?
I'll check and see if there's cease and desist first.
Thank you, thank you.
Cause I can say if there is a pre-made, which is more than two years ago.
What film was on, uh? What film's the selectman, who's on the plan again?
Uh.
Glenn, was that it?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Did you wanna ask us if he had, if they had to come to planning? I thought you had the number card left me to ask that question.
Oh, yeah, they, in association with the, um, with putting in new stack, the asphalt plant, physical plant is getting smaller in size. And they, they have submitted a request that that means that they don't have to do a site plan. And I wanted to hear the planning board's perspective on it.
So they're not using what they were, they're not, not as many businesses?
And this is contingent upon the meaning of the, of the height variance, they're changing, they'll, they get to change their process a bit. And it means they can shrink their, um, envelope. But even in shrinking it, is that a change of, of use on the site that the board would consider worthy of looking at the site?
I would think they'd at least want to give us an as-built to show that it was smaller for the file for the future.
And is it a permanent thing or a temporary thing?
No, permanent. They would be able to.
Well, that, I, I agree, I agree that at the very least, we should have on file something that, that reflects what is on the site.
Would the end result be if, if their process gets enhanced?
Yeah, an as-built. But would they need to come back for amended site plan or not? I.
I mean, my take might be no, if they're truly reducing their size.
Right.
Because amended site plans are supposed to be for changing use or expansion.
Or expansion use, right.
It also may be an EPA thing. You know, it may be that they're saying get the stack up higher to get there.
To get, to get farther into the atmosphere.
You do that a lot of time.
Call Nova Scotia to serve.
Where everyone forgets when it's gone.
It's very good.
Well, hang on, all right. But yes, I will, but.
I'd say they don't need to move it for us.
But I, I agree that they ought to give some kind of drawing or something after what they're doing.
Well, we should have an as-built.
And when they put together that plan for the ZB A, so they have that plan.
Do you submit it to a staff date? But is the board comfortable with that? Is anybody not comfortable with that?
No.
Uh, no, I don't think so.
Does anyone have, other reporter? Yes, Peter.
Uh, on, on the, uh, review, the ordinance is, uh, I'll be really quick on this. I just wanted to get, reach my pasties out, was I wanted to get some kind of feedback on the sense of the board on how they wanna address the food truck issue, because I don't want to go another year, uh, and have to come up and source again and say, well, you know, we meant to make one ordinance and we were placing, didn't get to it. And so there's, kinda, it's separating into two parts. One is the hoppers and cutlers, which is a lot of towns do that, like extra stuff, parking regulations and, and giving permits. Um, and, and we can make a suggestion. We can, um, use some of the, the Clermont ideas and, and step, and extra ideas for the hoppers and cutlers ordinance that we have. We can just add on to that to the food trucks. And then the other idea is for permit locations, uh, Tennessee seems to be to, and I know Conway's done this. Um, you, you would need to put it in the commercial and industrial zones as a permitted use.